Welcome to this forum tonight for the JCCC Board of Trustees election. My name is Jim Leicher, Professor of History and Vice President of the Faculty Association, which is one of the cosponsors of tonight's event. So in my 17 years with the college, I don't recall this kind of enthusiasm for a board race ever before, and I think that's awesome. Let me tell you what tonight is not about. This is not a campaign rally. The candidates and their supporters have been asked not to distribute campaign literature. From the rest of you, we are not seeking audience participation, either positive or negative. Examples of positive participation include cheering and clapping. Even when a candidate says something you really, really like, please hold your applause until all of them have completed their final remarks about 90 minutes from now. Examples of negative participation include, but are not limited to, booing, hissing, catcalls, throwing of food items, throwing of footwear, throwing of items that are neither food nor footwear, groaning, growling, scowling, smirking, rolling of eyes, murmuring under one's breath, and general all-around complaining. People who cannot comport themselves with dignity will be very politely invited to leave by other people wearing uniforms. And if that's not enough, please don't forget that this event is being recorded, so behave yourselves. The year 2900 is watching. Seriously, the candidates are guests. They have volunteered to compete in an intense race for a job with no monetary compensation, and for that, they deserve our respect. That being said, their comfort level is not necessarily our first priority. Each candidate will be asked a set of questions they have not seen in advance and have had no opportunity for which to prepare. These questions have been authored by representatives of the Faculty Association and the League of Women Voters. We hope they will help you, the audience, glean some insights into the candidates and their capacity to lead the institution over the next several years. You will have an opportunity to ask questions indirectly. Ellen Miller will explain that in just a second. Following the forum, you're all invited to a public reception in the Nerman Atrium downstairs, where you can visit with the candidates one-on-one and ask questions that you didn't get a chance to ask here. By the way, the reception is courtesy of our own president, Dr. Joe Sopchik, and now I will invite some positive participation. Thank you, Joe, for feeding us. Without further ado, I'd like to introduce Ellen Miller, President of the Johnson County Chapter of the League of Women Voters.
He had all the wonderful lines about the scowls, the rolls of eyes. Those are mine, Jim. You took it, but it's all right. Well, thank you very much. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that neither supports nor opposes candidates or parties. And for decades, we have hosted or cosponsored candidate events like this at the local, state, and national levels. I see heads nodding as I say that. But important, of critical importance, is assuring that these candidate forums are fair and impartial and that the guidelines, which by the way worsened out ahead of time to all the candidates, are fairly and equally managed for both the speakers and for the audience. Now, your questions for the candidates are very important. How we're going to do it this evening is by cards. There are cards on the tables. You may or may not have one right in front of you, but they're on the tables. And if you need more, just put your hand up, and we have some staff who will bring them. Please write down your question on the card. Our league members will gather them, pull them together, and, time permitting, as the last segment of this forum, there will be several that we will bring for all six of the candidates to respond to. Now, you know about the invitation to the forum, and that is a really good opportunity. If your particular question on your card doesn't happen to be able to be handled in the time we have, come downstairs and join us for refreshments of the foyer and ask the candidate informally. Now, candidates and information. Where to go to get more candidate information about this or other races here in Kansas? Well, it's the online League Voter Guide. It's called vote411.org. We've got a bunch of handouts out there about that. And it is the place to see what candidates are answering to three or four questions that we leaguers have posed to them for each of the races that are covered. And finally, with no further ado, I am delighted to introduce this evening's moderator, Professor Terry Easley-Giraldo. Thank you very much.
It didn't fall, so that was good. All right. Good evening, and thanks for joining us today. Before we start, I'd like to explain the format of today's event, which was explained to the candidates prior in an email. We plan to ask a total of six questions, time permitting. The first three have been prepared questions by the League of Women Voters and the Faculty Association. The remaining three questions, as Ellen told you, would be audience questions. And each candidate will have two minutes to answer the question. They were selected by a random order, so everybody gets a chance to go first, second, and third one time, so it's as fair and equal as we can be. Each candidate will be asked to stop if they go over the two minutes, and we will conclude with final remarks, where every candidate will get one minute to conclude. All right? Without further ado, we'll jump in. Question one. And candidates, some of the questions might be a little wordy, so halfway in, if number four needs to repeat the question, I'm happy to do that. Question one. The Inside Higher Ed and other journals note a general enrollment decline at American colleges and universities, with Kansas as a state that is leading the way downward. What adjustments do you believe colleges and universities will need to make as this trend continues? We will start with Mr. Greg Musil.
First of all, thank you all for coming. It is impressive to see interest in this race. It's an important race for the college and the future of the college. Enrollment trends nationally are down, particularly in community colleges, because community colleges are counter-cyclical. When people have jobs, they don't come back to college. We've done very well with our 18-year-olds coming from high school to college. We've done very well for 18- to 21-year-olds. Our enrollment is significantly down in 24-years-old and older, because they're working and they're out in the workforce. In 2013, we had our highest enrollment ever, because it was coming out of the depth of the greatest recession. So this is not something to panic about. It's certainly something to be concerned about, because we know that to get jobs and to have careers in the future, you're going to have to have some higher education. Maybe not four years, maybe a welding certificate, maybe an HVAC certificate, maybe a two-year automotive technology degree. Those are the programs that we're expanding here, so that we can have those students enroll in those career paths and take general education courses to help support the college. We have kept our tuition lower than any other community college in Kansas, lower than any other community college in the metropolitan area. Our business community and some of you have supported scholarships to $1.2 million through the Johnson County Community College Foundation. We need to continue to expand those efforts, and we will keep our enrollment up. Our enrollment is better than our peer universities, better than our community colleges in Kansas. We have weathered this better than anybody else, but we're not satisfied. Dr. Weber back there in charge of enrollment and admissions is not satisfied, and I know Dr. Sopchik isn't. So if we keep tuition low, keep ourselves accessible, and keep our programs relevant, our enrollment will be fine. Thank you.
Next, Lori Bell.
Thank you for hosting this. This is an interesting question that I've put a lot of thought into. My son attended Johnson County Community College through the College Now program, which is a great program. It's a dual-credit program, where they earn credit while they are in high school. He then went on to K-State. He didn't continue at Johnson County Community College. He got credit while he was in high school and went on. So there's a need there to bring more incentives to come to Johnson County Community College. I am a recipient of the Missouri A-plus program, which is a earned college scholarship program. That is, you have to earn a 2.5 GPA, have a 95% attendance rate, and complete 50 hours of community service. If my son had been offered something like that, I would have made sure that he came to Johnson County Community College. Additionally, we're losing students, because Johnson County Community College has the unique environment where they have invited students outside of the county to come to the college. Those students are coming in at a lower educational rate, so they need help in reading and math skills. We need to have more programs to insinuate them to stay here and get those needed benefits, so that they'll continue and not drop out of the college. So it's kind of a unique situation. I don't think it's an end-all. I think there's some programs that we can use to kind of keep students here, insinuate them, and we'll see that, you know, across other areas, too. We'll have improvement in different programs. We'll offer scholarships. There's just a lot of need in this county that is not being recognized, and I feel like there is an opportunity to support all students in this county. Thank you.
Colleen Cunningham.
Thank you all for coming here tonight. I really appreciate your being here at the forum and working to be more informed with your vote. So as the question stated, this is a trend across the country. There was an article that I read not too long ago that kind of looked at a case study of Blue Ridge Community College in North Carolina, which was actually very similar to Johnson County Community College. They were celebrating 50 years, they had a new president, and their enrollment was on a downward trend. Some of the things that they did, they started out having a listening tour to find out what people in the community, what reasons they had for not attending the college. In their particular case, some of the reasons included things like they had sort of dated ideas about what was happening at the college. They weren't aware of how the programs at the college were keeping up with the local industry and that kind of thing. So from their listening tour, they went ahead and did some marketing things to get more people involved. They also worked really closely with businesses in their state and in their local area, and they worked with other state organizations that do work with community colleges across the state of North Carolina. I think there's also areas to look into as far as expanding demographic groups. One of the programs that used to exist here was the Brown and Gold Program, which brought in seniors who could join a membership program, and then they were able to take classes that hadn't filled all of the seats in the class, and that might be one way to entice people to come in. Oh, we're coming in for this, and maybe we're going to stay for some other classes, too. So, thank you.
Jamia Haynes.
Good evening. I'd also like to thank the League of Women Voters, as well as the Faculty Association, for having this forum this evening. Local elections are important, and it's nice to have this venue. As noted, enrollment is down. I would like to note that four-year universities are less affected by that due to the average-age student that is entering those institutions. Community colleges' enrollment goes down when the economy is good, which it is, and so we're seeing a little bit of that. What I would say to that is that we plug in where there's a need, and that continues the trend of this, of the college working with our community and our businesses and the community, and particularly with regard to the career and technical education offerings. A few weeks ago, I was able to tour the Hugh L. Libby Career and Technical Education Center, and it's just phenomenal. Those are careers that are in need: plumbers and electricians and HVAC and automotive education. So I think that's where we plug in and fill a need in the community, as well as create opportunity for education for our students. This is also--
Could you sit the microphone closer to your mouth? I can't hear.
Sure. Is that better? No?
It doesn't sound like it's working.
Is that better? No? Am I on? Can you hear me? Yeah? Okay. Let me scoot it up here a little bit. No, I can't. So in conclusion, I believe that plugging into the career technical education offerings will allow us to fill a need in the community, as well as increase enrollment in the college. If all the candidates, when you speak, make sure you speak really close to the microphones, because we've got them set for both the video recording and here, so just make sure you're really close. Okay, Nancy Ingram.
Yes, and thank you again to the League of Women Voters and to the Faculty Association for sponsoring this evening. It is a pleasure to be here, and as has been already mentioned, you can't hear me?
Yeah.
Even closer?
Yeah.
Oh. I'm so sorry. Well, thank you to everyone for being here this evening. This is a little unnerving.
It is.
Bear with me. We are experiencing all-time-low unemployment, and as a result, the students who are 18- to 21-years-old, who would come to the college, are the most sought-after age group. I believe that we really need to continue to work on workforce development, and the way that we do that is just by focusing simply on our students. We do that by participating in the chambers and workforce development programs. There's just a lot of task force work, I'm sorry, that is being done at this time, and this is a place where we want to be included. We need to be involved in those conversations. We are a leader in workforce development, and it's just important to have relevant classes that we are offering. We remind ourselves that our enrollment does reflect the economy, and although our numbers have remained mostly flat, there is a strong need to be visionary in what we are offering. So it's that balance of what is a general ed course and what we see as being something visionary, something that's going to be needed in the future by our students. So it's just providing that balance for them. Anyway, we do that by focusing on the students, so thank you.
Laura Smith Everett.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me? Thank you once again so much for the League of Women Voters, as well as the college for hosting us. This is really important, and I appreciate all of you that are showing how important it is by your presence tonight. So I think there are a couple things. The part about going last is everybody takes my answers, and so I'm kind of left with a few things that I would like to illustrate that maybe haven't been mentioned. To echo one of the other candidates, I think Missouri has caught on to a group of students who don't typically see themselves as college students, and that's the B student, students that are not thinking or don't have parents that provide them with the opportunity or the conversation about college. And so it's sort of a foreign thing to them. So I think we could do a lot at JCCC to really reach out to the B students that may not think of themselves as college-ready, but would, with some more information and marketing from the college, consider JCCC a great place to further their education after high school. I think that we can also, and I know the college is doing this in some ways, but we can really offer a retooling option in cooperation with, but also independent of, businesses and workforces, so that for students that are my age, middle age, and they're thinking about a career change, they understand how JCCC can help them get there, and that we cater our offerings for people who are wanting to make a career change and would not otherwise consider the college. Finally, I think that we have a big task to do with reaching out to a more diverse student body. I think that regionally and nationally, we are diversifying, but that the college, in some ways, has seen some increase in diversity, but I think we can really reach out to students who may not see that this is a place for them, because they don't see--
I know.
You said it was loud, so I will stop there.
Question two. As informed citizens, we are all aware of the crippling student loan debt that many people bear. What is your perspective on making sure Johnson County Community College remains available and affordable to all Johnson County residents, particularly those with limited resources? Colleen Cunningham.
So I have a large amount of student loan debt. I got my master's degree in special education, and while I was there, I did coursework in educational policy and leadership studies, and I took a lot of classes, and I took out a lot of debt for that. I also came from a low-income family, so this question really speaks to my own experiences growing up. I think that one of the things that we can do is make sure that tuition is manageable for students and affordable, and that that's a priority, is making the school affordable for students. I think that making sure that students have good supports as far as figuring out what academic programs they'd like to pursue or that kind of thing can be useful. I know I spent a lot of time sort of meandering in college when I started as an 18-year-old, so I think that those things would be very useful, to make sure tuition is low and that students have the supports that they need to make sure that they aren't too meandering when they attend school.
Nancy Ingram.
Yes. It's interesting. At Johnson County Community College, 18% of our students have student loans. 33% are on Pell Grants. 25% have payment plans, but our average loan is $2,885. So I think that is an area that we've done a really good job in. It's important that students know where to go to find the money when they come on our campus, and they know what scholarships are available and what kinds of opportunities we have to assist them. I'm really proud of the Hurstiner Grant that was achieved, just, I think, a little over a year ago. It allows single parents, mothers, to come on campus, and while they're on campus, they do not pay for their childcare. We also have several different kinds of food banks, if you will, food cards. We have a clothing bank. We also have some mental health support for our students, too. So I think in addition to keeping debt down and what we can provide our students, we have some really, really good offerings, and when we know what their needs are, we can help them address those needs. And I think that's really what I'm most proud of, is that no matter what a student need is, if we know about it, we can assist them with that. So we do give a lot of scholarship money. We have a lot of support from the community with those scholarships, and it's something to be really proud of. So our debt is low, and I think that's a good place to be. So thank you.
Greg Musil.
Crippling debt depends on what debt you took and what program you were in. I'm moving to a new house, and I found my student loan payoff letter from 1993, 10 years after I graduated from law school. I saved it. I have a daughter that's a pediatrician in Olathe. She has significant debt, and she is going to be able to pay it, because she chose a profession. I have another daughter who's a social worker who has significant debt from her master's in social work at the University of Kansas Edward Center. She's going to struggle with that. What Johnson County Community College offers is a low-cost way. You can get your first two years of college for less than $6,000 worth of tuition, less than $6,000. We raise $1.2 million in scholarship money every year, and if you want to help with that, the Sum and Chanted Evening fundraiser is November 9th at the convention center. Buy a table. Help some kids get to college. What we have, we have kept tuition flat for 2000, school year 16, 17, 17, 18, and 18, 19, and then we raised it a dollar for Johnson County residents. We're at $94 a credit hour, about 30% of K-State and about 28% of KU. Our tuition has gone down as a percentage of our budget from 25% to 18%, and that shift has gone on property taxpayers from 55% to 66% of our general fund budget. We have done a lot of work to keep ourselves affordable for Johnson County residents, particularly those who need it. We have discussed recently to retreat a promise program that would be for those students that Laura mentioned last time, those that might not think they have a chance at college. But the consensus of the board was it should be based on financial need, and not everybody needs that. We need to target students who are first-generation college students, who need the support to go to college, who may not have transportation, who may be a single mom, who may not have daycare, who may have a transmission breakdown. We're doing those things, and we can do more of it with private support. Thank you.
Laura Smith Everett.
Can you repeat the question for me?
Absolutely. As informed citizens, we are all aware of the crippling student loan debt many people bear. What is your perspective on making sure Johnson County Community College remains available and affordable to all Johnson County residents, particularly those with limited resources?
So I think repeating many of the things that other people have said, I think it's really critical that we do keep the tuition at an affordable rate and a dependable rate, so that families who are planning two, four, six years from now have a sense of what that tuition will be. I'm going to take this opportunity to speak about the fact that I would have opposed the tuition raise, because it did not serve a purpose, and what ended up happening was that the college got negative press after that, because they didn't communicate fully before that tuition raise and explain why it was needed or what the funding would go for. And so in doing so, now people think JCCC is even more unaffordable, and in reality, it is not. It is a very affordable institution, and it is a great option for students to come and get a much lower student debt rate than going straight to a university. And I've spoken to a lot of students this summer who have taken summer courses, because their parents say, "I'll pay for it if you go to JCCC, but I won't pay for it at the university, because it's really out of our affordability." So I think it's important that what we, if we say that we need to keep tuition low, that we advertise that and we explain that to the community, and I think in the case of the most recent tuition hike, that wasn't done, and that's sending a lot of mixed messages to our community.
Lori Bell.
Well, first off, I want to thank my mom for helping me pay off all my debt, and my dad. Obviously, I went through my master's program. I came out with a lot of student loan debt myself. I also put my husband through school, back through school, and my son through school. We know all about debt. We have lots of it. So we're living the dream, I guess, of paying off those bills. What I want to say, though, is this is not an easy solution. This is a generational issue. Rates across the United States have gone up at all the institutions. I think for Johnson County Community College, it's imperative that we keep tuition low. We try to find a way to bring college promise to this institution and to get that up and running. I think that that's how we keep student loan debt down. I do agree that the tuition raise, I don't know what that money went to, other than a general fund. Did it go back to scholarships? I want to know more about that, and I'm sure that members of the community want to know more, too. So I promise that as a trustee, I will make sure that communication to the community is vital, and we know what's happening. Thank you.
Jamia Haynes.
Well, Laura's correct. It's hard going last. I have to think of something that I can tell you. I think first I will weigh in on the dollar increase, and I would say that when you look at the history of the college budget, the revenues from tuition are at an all-time low, at 18%, and tuition percentages from property taxes are at an all-time high, 66%. Following three consecutive years of keeping tuition flat, I would agree with the dollar increase, because I think it's reasonable, and I think that it keeps it affordable still for students that are entering the college. With regard to, also with regard to keeping financial aid and not letting that get out of hand, what I would say is I also have financial aid, and I have student loan debt. And with the daughter that's in college now, and she is entering her college path, I think it's important to start early and think about what programs you can take advantage of, like College Now, and how can you keep it affordable. And also with regard to the offerings here at the college, I would say that there are so many other options to assist these students, and this college does a very good job of reaching out with regard to that. I think someone had mentioned that the JCCC Foundation funds over $1 million in scholarships per year, and that's helpful. The reality is that obtaining education can be a roadblock, but utilizing these programs can help these students.
Okay. Our third question is a bit long. We're providing a little bit of context, so please ask to repeat it if you'd like. So a little bit of context, and then the questions at the end. A recent engagement survey shows that staff and faculty have less trust in senior leadership than three years ago. The Higher Learning Commission recently noted that the college needs to improve areas of shared governance and vertical communication, and some contend that the relations between faculty and administration are at their lowest point in 25 years. What steps do you believe the college should take going forward to address this? Lori Bell.
Thanks. Thanks. This is definitely a touchy subject, and here's what I'm going to say about this. I know that the school spent about $60,000 on that survey. At a recent board meeting that I attended, I watched a faculty member get up and speak about that engagement survey and essentially say, "How low do we need to rate you before you do something about it?" That's concerning to me as a citizen because I want to make sure that our faculty are happy, because we do not have happy students if we do not have happy instructors. As far as fixing it goes, I think there needs to be a bridge. There needs to be communication. There needs to be some closed-door meetings and some, and talking it out. It really boils down to relationships, and we're in a relationship situation here. That's what the community college is. It's a way to build relationships, not tear them apart. So we really need to focus on getting the right people in the room to really talk about the issues at heart. And they need to be heard, and I think that's the most important piece, is that people just want to be heard, what their issues are, and that's all they're asking for. Thank you.
Jamia Haynes.
With regard to the tenure accreditation for the, from the Higher Learning Commission in 2018, it did note, and I've read that it said, quote, "There are areas of improvement noted with regard to communication." And I completely agree. Open communication and effective communication is key to anything, and particularly with regard to higher education. It's important in the shared governance structure for the college. And I think that that means that every party at the table has a job to do. I think that means that everyone's accountable and should hold others accountable. And with regard to what happened in the past, and you know, what I think we focus on now is what we do going forward and what should happen, and I think that that starts with every party there. I think that it's easy to look back and say, "Well, this could have been different," and it could have. So what can we do? We go forward, we communicate effectively with all stakeholders, and to keep the interest at mind, which is the most important part, is the students here.
Laura Smith Everett.
Thank you. I think the great thing is that what has to be done is free, and so that's the good news. What it is, is it's time and it's effort, willingness to listen. And when that is not your habit for how you operate, it's very easy to make decisions because you deem them as the best. But what we need is, we need a stopgap between decisions being made, I know I'm breathy, but I didn't think it was that. Between decisions being made and instituting them. And so that's really one of the critical roles of the trustee. I see that as a really important part of what I would do as trustee, which is when decisions are coming to the board, the questions need to be asked. Who was included in this? How did you gain information, insight, or buy-in from the various stakeholders at the campus? And if those questions aren't being asked, then mistrust is sown even further because people have a belief that decisions were made in a room, in a boardroom somewhere, and no one else was included. Secondly, I think the critical thing here is to really look forward and think about who the next leader of the campus is. I think it is incredibly critical that in choosing the next leader, we choose someone with an academic background who has a proven record of bringing various stakeholders to the table. Students should be on every task force we have at the campus, every single one. Faculty should be on a great portion of them. And if we are choosing a leader who has great corporate experience, I think that that is a disastrous recipe for the camp, for the college. I think instead, we need to pick somebody with an academic background that has a proven record for bringing various stakeholders to the table, is able to show that even if the decisions aren't all agreed on by all parties, all parties are listened to, and that's critical.
Nancy Ingram.
Even at this point, there's, there's not a lot to add to it because we've addressed some really critical things already at this table. But I'm going to go back to communication and just a quote that I found, I don't even know where it came from, but it says, "Lack of communication ruins everything because instead of knowing how the other person is feeling, we just assume." And in many cases, I think that's where some of this is derived from. People just assume, and we need to earn their trust again. When it comes to transparency, when it comes to communication, I think some of the things that we need to address are really quite simple, and they've already been spoken about. It's simply being willing to listen, and that's one of the most important responsibilities of a trustee, is to listen. Now, when it comes to being transparent, if we are in the room and we're all making a decision, I think one of the things that we're going to have to do is talk about, "Here's how we believe we're moving forward. Here's what we believe we are doing to be transparent." And then engage those folks who are around the table to make sure that they agree, "This is transparent. This is how we move forward." I go back to some of the other comments that were made earlier about just making sure that we have the right people at the table. I think that's elementary. I think there are some assumptions on our part that all of those things have already transpired before they come before the board, and in many cases, I think they have. But again, I think it's going back to some very simplistic conversations, making sure that we do have the right people at the table. I know we can always make improvement. I think we do a really good job, but I think we need to communicate better what we have done and how we're going to move forward in the future. So, thank you.
Greg Musel.
If anybody here thinks their family, or their business, or their PTA, or their church communicates as well as it possibly could, please raise your hand. We can all get better at this. Understand the context of this. We decided years ago to every two years, pay somebody for an engagement survey to find out from the newest janitor to the most senior faculty member, "How do you feel about this college?" And we've done that every two years, and this one showed that there was a decrease in the trust in senior management. And there was this immediate outcry that, "Do something, do something." And you know what? We're doing something. There have been multiple town hall meetings with faculty and staff from that newest janitor all the way to the most senior faculty involved, and we're going to have a report, and we're going to address it. The Higher Learning Commission came in for the first time in almost twenty years and accredited us for another ten years. And they identified some areas that we need to improve because there are always areas you need to improve. If we have the people at the table, and I think they're at the table most of the time, we can all get better at our willingness to listen. Everybody wants to be heard. Sometimes everybody wants whatever they say to be implemented, and that can't happen on a college campus that's as diverse as ours, with stakeholders from the business community, to teachers, to faculty, to students, to our clear students who are emotionally challenged and their parents. We're going to have disagreements. Dr. Sobchak came in and changed some things, and you know what change does, is it makes people uncomfortable. We tried to be accountable. We know more about our budget. We cut costs to try to keep tuition down. We're going to communicate those things better, and we're going to talk about it. I pledge that I'll listen better than I have in the past because I know I can do better as well. But this is going to be a joint effort, and everybody has to listen, and everybody has to be willing to assume the other person's good faith.
Colleen Cunningham.
Thank you. So when I first heard about this, this problem happening at the school, I kind of went back, because I'm a researcher, and I went back and looked through the faculty meeting minutes, the minutes for the Faculty Association meetings to see if we could find some information from there about what, what were some things we could do. And they did, as was said, have some suggestions that were very useful and didn't cost a lot. One of the things that they mentioned was having the faculty attending more of the administrative meetings and having more administrators attending faculty meetings so that there's an opportunity for more dialogue between those two groups of people. I think one of the other things is establishing more clear pathways and policies for communicating information. There's been some specific concerns about if you work in one department, your dean might give you this information. If you work in a different department, you may not get access to the same information. So I think making sure that everybody's getting the same information by the same pathway as much as possible would be very useful. I think that, like other people have said, being proactive about including affected parties and bringing them to the table before decisions are made so that they are part of that decision-making process would be very useful and would probably also increase buy-in when decisions are made, even if it's not the decision that person wants, they know they were part of the discussion and that they were heard. I think, I agree with Laura that a change in leadership is probably going to be something that will affect this. I agree that we need to find somebody who comes from an academic background because there are just some basic differences between how businesses are run and how education systems are run. You know, I ran across a quote while I was reading that stuff, that somebody pointed out, one of the faculty members, that teaching environments are student learning environments. And if we aren't supporting to make sure that we have teacher environments where teachers can do their best work, the students are the ones who are going to suffer for that. So we really need to make sure that we're taking care of that.
Okay, we're now moving on to our audience questions. What professional qualifications do you bring that suggest you are equipped to sit on the board of 160 million and 1,600 employee enterprise? Nancy Ingram.
Well, at this point, I'm going to divert to the fact that I am an incumbent, and so I have the four years of experience in doing just that. Additionally, and I think that's probably the best place where I can derive the experience that I have and the position that I've been in, the committees that I have been a part of while here on campus. We're all a part of different committees. I was on several in the beginning. Right now, I serve as the chairman of the Management Committee, and that is the oversight of the budget, vendors, you know, just the business side of our college. So I think that probably is the most important thing that I can offer at this point, is just that relevant experience of the past four years. Just end with that.
Greg Musel.
I'm the son of a teacher. My dad and my brother served on local school boards for eight years each. I got the opportunity for a year at Kansas State University to sit in on the administrative cabinet as student body president. I watched a four-year school for four years with the provost and the Student Affairs Vice President. I have a law degree. I served on the Overland Park City Council for eight years, managing, helping manage a budget of about that same amount. I'm a property taxpayer. I have kids who have gone here. Both of my daughters got dozens of hours of credit at Johnson County Community College. My niece and my nephew came down here and ran track on scholarship from my little hometown. I've been working for this college since 1993, raising money for scholarships. I don't think there's a magic professional qualification that you should have to be on this board. I think everybody up here on this panel has whatever qualifications it needs because they all give a darn about their college. I've worked for this college. I have watched the budget. I have watched tuition so that we can remain affordable. I have managed to, hopefully managed to help it become more student-focused, more transparent in terms of the money that is spent here and how it's spent, more careful about how we spend your money as taxpayers, and more focused on what are relevant curriculum so a student can come here in one year or two years and get out and get a job, not just get a job, but have a career. And those are the kind of qualifications I think you should look for in the next trustee, someone who's invested in this community and invested in this college, not somebody who just wants to be on the, on the, on the board because they see a problem, a single problem. This is a broad-based community college, and we need people that are broad-based in the community, that have been active in their church, their PTA, their business, and otherwise.
Jamia Haynes.
As a real estate attorney, I've dealt with a number of the issues that cross the desk of a board of trustees. I deal with contracts every day. I've worked in operations. I've overseen multimillion-dollar budgets. I've, I've done those things. I can do that work. On the other side of it, I am someone that is a community member that cares about this college and about this community. I am someone that has been engaged in all aspects of that, what that means, and PTA and homeowner association, and, and I care, and that's why. And I think also, as important as any of that, goes back to the communication piece. I understand the need for effective communication for any leadership in any capacity, and that includes the college and education business, et cetera, anywhere. I encourage the communication necessary to achieve the college's mission, and I will do those things.
Colleen Cunningham.
So my background is that I grew up in a low-income family in Iowa, but I had access to strong public schools, and so I was able to go on to get my bachelor's degree and go on to graduate school eventually. So I appreciate trustee Musel's statement that we need to give a darn because as a kid who only got where I'm sitting now because of strong public education, like, I give a darn. Beyond that, I have my master's degree in special education, and while I was there at the University of Iowa, I studied educational policy and leadership studies, and I kind of specifically focused in on the intersection of race, class, and gender with education systems. After I did that, I moved down here to Overland Park to teach special education. I met my now-husband, and we started our family. A few years ago, I started volunteering in the community. I started with Moms Demand, what is it? Moms Demand Action for Guns, Sons, and America, and then kind of branched out to different groups from there. I also volunteer with my kids' PTA and Girl Scouts and BSA and a lot of different groups around the community. So I am involved in the community, but I also have that education background. I taught K-12 and taught college as well during the course of that, so that's me.
Laura Smith Everett. Thank you. I am, as far as I have researched, the only active educator, current educator, running. And so I think that's a really critical component to know. I've spent sixteen years as an educator, and I can list off all the resume things. I've got bachelor's in education and master's from KU in teaching English as a second language. I volunteered at my church, my home association, my children's school, my own schools, and so forth and so on. I think the question that I always want to be asked, that doesn't get asked, is what are the qualities? It's not so much the qualifications. We all have great resume bullets that we can list off, but what are the qualities that make you unique in this race? And so for me, I think one of the critical things is I've worked at schools where, I have worked solely at schools where the student body population is more diverse than the faculty. And I've had to, through my role as an instructional coach, a curriculum director, and a classroom teacher, worked with groups of educators, administrators, students, and parents to tackle how we build in diversity and make our students feel welcome and part of their school. And it's not easy, and I think that's one of the next chapters in Johnson County Community College's future, is really embracing the diversity that is coming to the campus and how we tackle it. Some other things are, you can ask my mother, I guess she would be the best one to vouch for. I'm a very independent thinker, and I don't do what other people say to do because they say so. I don't do what's cool or in style. Perhaps I'll pay for that in my fashion, but it's a really important component of who I am. As an educator and in a variety of roles I've held, I have always brought independence to that.
Lori Bell.
So my background, I'm a veteran of the United States Air Force. I served overseas in Guam. I also was a compliance auditor in banking for about thirteen years. I became an auditor because I saw it as a need to serve organizations that were going through problems. I used that to grow my personal career into, as a consultant for organizations going through change. So what I do now is I work with organizations that are changing technology, changing culture, changing for financial reasons, and I help them. I do have a master's in finance, and again, I was an auditor. I taught as an adjunct instructor for accounting at Upper Iowa University on Fort Leavenworth to military members and their families. I serve. That's what I do. That's what I believe in, and I want to serve this community and this community college. It's as simple as that. I believe in giving back to what I was given. I attended three different community colleges while I was going through school after I got out of the military. So I know what a community college is meant for and who it's geared towards, and that's why I want to serve this, this school. Thank you.
Okay. Our next audience question. With enrollment trending down, would you be in favor of adding the track program that the board dropped? Research indicates that adding sports equals additional students, both athletes and non-athletes. Laura Smith Everett.
Well, that's a doozy of a question to get right off the bat.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks a lot. I, I don't think it matters what I, what I want or what I think. I think the question is if it's needed on this campus. So, I would answer that I would reach out to both the students, the faculty, and the stakeholders who deem that as an important component of the Johnson County Community College campus life and experience, and if they believe that that needs to come back, then as trustee, I would work to make it so. But it's not about my preference, it's about the needs of the college and the stakeholders and how they voice a need for that.
Colleen Cunningham.
Good answer, Laura Smith Everett. As far as the track program goes, I agree with Laura that it's really not a decision that would be up to me. I think that what's important is reaching out to the stakeholders to see what's, what's feasible and what makes sense and what's beneficial. I think the thing about the track program that has really struck me is that in the process of, of getting rid of the track and cross-country programs, it wasn't so much, from what I have heard from people who are invested in that, that the track program was gotten rid of. It is how it was gotten rid of. The people were not, that were affected were not included in the discussions. There wasn't an effort to say, can we do some fundraising to make up for this? The track was taken out because, because the funding sources said, I'm sorry, I'm getting all flustered here, the track thing really gets me. There was, we can have the track, but we would have to raise tuition by a dollar a credit hour. The track was removed, tuition was still raised by a dollar a credit hour. It does, it just, it doesn't make sense to me how that happened. It seems like the discussions weren't transparent and weren't communicated clearly to the people who were invested and affected, so that's all.
Nancy Ingram.
Well, I was a part of that decision, and it has to be one of the decisions. That was the most difficult decision that I think this board has made in the four years that I've been a part of it. What I never told people or really spoke about when we were making that decision was that my husband was a cross-country coach and a track coach, and so he and I had numerous conversations about this. But based upon the information that we had and the data that was provided for us, we voted to cut that program. Now, it's not the first program that we have cut here on this campus. It was the first one I have been a part of cutting, but it is something that, that I'm not proud of. I think it does go back to some degree to communication. I think it goes back to transparency on a number of people's parts, but it's a lesson to be learned. Now, that being said, is that something that we might consider again? That seems to be the question that is posed most often. You know, would you consider reinstating that? And again, I think it goes back to, is there a need? Is there an interest? And what is that going to look like? So, I'm not opposed to that conversation. Again, I, I think it's a decision I'm not proud of, but it was one that seemed to be the right decision at the right time, or we never would have made it.
Lori Bell.
So, it's my understanding that in order to take the facilities and update them to ADA compliance, it would have cost a significant amount of money. I know that that had to be a hard decision to make. Also, the, the, there's change in Johnson County. There's a lot of kids playing soccer these days, not so much track. So, we have to look at, again, the need and what the kids are coming in playing these days. I'm a tennis girl, so I was sad to see that program go, but I think that we have to look at current trends, the cost to keep facilities updated. I know that I probably would have made the same decision, but I think I would have been a little bit more transparent with the community about why we had, why they had to make that decision. I think that that was a very difficult decision to make. I, I can't imagine making that one. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Jamia Haynes.
Well, I can tell you that as I've walked doors, that track is probably one of the most prevalent conversations that I've had with folks. There's a lot of conversation around this issue, and there's a lot of emotion around this issue. When I first was researching this, I reached out to both sides, and what I can tell you is it did boil down to, as someone else mentioned up here, one of the previous coaches said, it's not even that maybe it shouldn't have gone away, it's how it occurred. So, I would say that that relays back to the communication issue, and we need to do as, as well as we can and do a good job at getting everyone in the same room with an understanding so no one at the end is left out saying, what happened here? With regard to the financial situation there, it's my understanding that that program was costing $450,000 for 40 to 50 athletes. Half of that, so $10,000 per athlete, half of that would be coming from student fees. And we have students in need here. So, I think it's a trustee's job to look at the budget and make it feasible and do the right thing, whether it's athletic program or an academic program. So, I would have agreed with that based on those numbers, although I know it's not easy, and I think it could have been done in a, a more understanding way for all parties.
Greg Musel.
Like Nancy, I was on the board when we made that decision as part of our facilities master plan, and it, it is evidence of what a board of trustees does. We set priorities for the college, and we set priorities on what we're going to spend your money on. As Jamia said, it's $450,000 on 40 to 50 students. They were very successful. Our track programs were successful. If we could devote that kind of resources to every student, every student would be engaged, and every student would get their degree, and they would complete, and they would go on. But we don't have those resources. It turns out, we were the last community college in the metropolitan area to get rid of track and cross-country. We kept it longer than anybody else, and we prioritized women's softball, which was playing on a substandard field and is now going to play on a first-class field, and men's and women's soccers, soccer, which were playing on substandard fields and are now are going to play on a, on a grade-A field. Those fields will be available to the public. They're ADA accessible. They have parking that's available. It wasn't an easy decision. I told you earlier, my niece and nephew came down here and ran track on scholarships from little old Frankfurt, Kansas. They both got All-American honors. You know what? I didn't know at the time that half, that their scholarships were being paid for by other students out of their fees. That would have changed my mind about how good a deal that was. It's an example of trustees making a difficult decision as part of the overall good of the college. Wasn't easy. Nobody, nobody got excited about it. Nobody loved it. The decisions were made in public meetings with public agendas and public documentation. It goes back to what I said earlier. Can we improve on communication? Yes. Would it have changed the feeling of those track alumni that were upset because we cut track? No. We could have done a better job of letting them know it was coming. And it's a lesson learned, but it's also a lesson learned in setting priorities. And the hardest thing to do in your business or on this campus is to say no to a program.
Okay. Our next audience question. Johnson County Community College's mission is to inspire learning to transform lives and strengthen communities. How important is it for JCCC to connect with and have reciprocal relationships with nonprofits in the Kansas City area? Jamia Haynes.
I think the connections in our community are absolutely essential because we are bringing students here to educate them, to plug them back into our community and our workforce. So, whether it's with regard to a nonprofit or university or a business or et cetera, those are all important connections, certainly.
Laura Smith Everett.
I think what makes a community college, the most important part of a community college, I should say, is the community aspect. So, whether students are coming to take classes, whether we're offering cultural experiences to families, or whether we're offering art classes to children, like my own, who've taken them right here in this building, community and the connection with the community is an incredibly vital part of what we do and why Johnson County Community College is such an important institution. So, the question was whether we, if we work with nonprofits, absolutely, just as much as we work with any other community entity, and we collaborate to find ways in which we both benefit. A great example is, my father teaches the local foods class, and through that class, the, the students enrolled actually go out to field trips, and they take field trips to local farms and local entities that provide local food, and they learn more about how we're really connected through food. And I think that's a great example of bringing in community entities actually into the classroom and how we develop and make sure that the community entities feel that they are a part of the college.
Lori Bell.
Sure. I think that it's imperative that the Johnson County Community College connect with nonprofits and find innovative ways of figuring out problems. It doesn't, to me, I'm like Laura, it doesn't matter if it's nonprofit or for-profit. I feel like there is a connection to be made between organizations that hire students from Johnson County Community College because that's where we're working towards, is getting our students' positions, and whether that's in nonprofit or for-profit. I think having advisory committees that actually report back to the college about what they're looking for in students helps us make better students. So, working with nonprofits obviously is a good deal. It's a great deal for our students, and I want to see that continue. Thank you.
Greg Musel.
Well, I don't know how broadly you define nonprofits. I would include our K-12 school system, where we work very closely with them. We have a new program at Blue Valley where they are bringing students over to the career tech ed program while they're in high school to start that program. I would include our Kansas Board of Regents schools that we send students to as transfer students. I would include our continuing education courses that bring people from all over the community in, whether you want to learn Excel or whether you want to learn how to excel in growing flowers. All of those things are what a community college does. We have a three-legged stool. We transfer students to four-year degrees. We do continuing education, and we do what I grew up calling vocational education. The career and tech ed programs that get people jobs so when your air conditioner goes out, somebody can come there. All of those, Johnson County developmental supports that works with our, with our CLEAR program. I wrote down our climate change coalition that we're going to have a conference here later this month. The Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, where we host for a week Hispanic students who have mostly never sat, never set foot on a college campus, and as Laura mentioned earlier, have no, no concept of college, come here for a week to work on projects and then graduate. The Small Business Development Center on campus, it's funded by the federal government that we host, that takes nonprofit businesses and turns them into profit businesses if you have an idea. They'll do your business plan. They will help you do your marketing. They'll help you get financing. All of those connections to the community make us a better community, and that's why Johnson County has excelled, and that's why Johnson County Community College is considered such a strength within the community. We touch people in the community every day, whether it's students in high school taking college classes, or the 16,000 students that come here on campus every day, or the people, the 10,000 to 15,000 that come through continuing ed courses on a yearly basis, or that come to the Performing Arts Center so that they come to see a play or they come to see a musical. That's how you touch community and make sure they feel a part of this and that we are a part of them.
Colleen Cunningham.
Yes, I am all for reciprocal relationships with nonprofits at Johnson County Community College. And, yeah. So, as I said earlier, I grew up in a low-income family, but one of the things that my parents instilled in me was the importance of giving back to our community. So, I can remember being in fourth and fifth grade, and we worked at, we volunteered at the local low-income grocery store, which resold cans of food that hadn't been sold and that kind of thing. It was, it was basically a food pantry. And because of that, I grew up with that sense that you give back to your community. I think that there are a lot of things that nonprofit organizations can do to help students at Johnson County Community College. Trustee Ingram mentioned earlier, you know, that a lot of the students here need help with things like transportation and food scarcity and clothing and different things like that. So, that's a way that these nonprofit organizations can help students, and I think that students, by receiving that, that from the nonprofit organizations, have a sense of wanting to give back, making it a reciprocal relationship.
Nancy Ingram.
I'm going to make this a little more personal, and I'm going to kind of play off of Greg's comments about K-12, but I'm going to tell you about one of my favorite nonprofits, which is the Olathe Public Schools Foundation. I sit on that board, and one of the things that we were discussing several years ago was our mental wellness programs in the Olathe School District. And I got to thinking about how all of these kiddos and a number of our Olathe students come from Olathe to the community college, and they've received mental wellness or mental counseling through their senior year. And I thought, what the heck happens? I know how much our nonprofit was contributing toward those programs in Olathe, but I thought, what happens to these students once they hit that senior year? How do they transition? So, we have partnered and are working on some transition pieces because of those kinds of nonprofit connections, if you will. The other thing that I would tell you is I'll take that a step further, and one of the things that became very important to me when it comes to mental health and the mental wellness of our students is that I serve on the Johnson County Mental Health Center Advisory Board. And I did that again to help with some of that connection here on the campus. And I know that we have some exciting things happen. I know we're working cooperatively, cooperatively with them, and we're going to see some placement of some support here at Johnson County Community College. The other thing that I would share is there's also another program in Olathe that's called Bridge to College, where we are taking some of the most vulnerable students, and we're teaming them up with scholarships and mentors so that if they are a first-generation student and they don't have somebody helping to advise them, they will have some support as they come to the college. So, I think any kind of relationship that we have with our nonprofit communities or profit communities is going to be instrumental in helping our students be successful as they are here at Johnson County. Thank you.
So, we're running good on time, which is great. So, if the, if the candidates are okay, we have one more audience question that we'd like to squeeze in?
We can't say no to you.
Okay. I'll remember that. Next audience question, our last one. Knowing, and we'll use the order from the first question if that's okay with all the candidates, so we'll go back to the first question order. Knowing that Kansas requires no registration of firearms and no permit at all to concealed carry, what is your position on concealed carry on campus? A doozy and one for the last one. Greg Musel.
Thank you for allowing me to go first. I think this is pretty easy, and I think you're going to hear agreement on this, maybe for different reasons. When this first came up in 2014-ish, when the legislature allowed concealed carry on campuses, without any decision-making by the board of trustees, they built in a three-year period for where we could study our security plan and see if we wanted to allow concealed carry or not. And we took, we took advantage of that three years because the board unanimously decided we do not want concealed carry on campus. And part of that was not just about the issue, but think about this. This is local control. Do you want your seven-member board elected by you running this college, or do you want Topeka running your college? I have always advocated, as a county council member, as a citizen, and on this board, this board is elected by the citizens of Johnson County. Don't take that away from us. Now, the legislature did, and we don't have a choice. I think if we had a choice, we would have listened to Chief Russell, who's in the back, who's the chief of our 26-member law enforcement, our police force on campus, who would say, I would rather not have more guns on campus. Don't get me wrong, I'm not naive. I know we had guns on campus before. I don't think we're safer with more guns on campus. I think we're safer because Chief Russell and his crew are on campus and will respond within three minutes average response time. So, this is one that is pretty simple for me. It's a local control issue. It should be in the hands of your board of trustees, not in the hands of Topeka. And if, if we had the opportunity to do it, I would make the same statement I made three years ago, which is I would vote to ban concealed carry from campus. By the way, Melody Rail was on the board of trustees, a former military officer and a police officer and a teacher at our police academy. She testified at the legislature, was the smartest person in the room, and nobody listened to her.
Lori Bell.
No, we should not have concealed carry on campus. It's as simple as that. My husband was a police officer with Overland Park for 10 years, so we have lots of guns, and he's going to keep them. He's a nurse now, and he's on the other side of it. So, you can imagine how, you know, we feel about that because we see the result of, of gun violence. So, the answer is no. It should not be allowed on campus.
Colleen Cunningham.
I agree. As a former K-12 teacher and a former college teacher and a As a former K-12 teacher and a former college teacher and a mom of kids that I send to school every day, no, we should not have concealed carry on campus. It makes everybody less safe.
Jamia Haynes.
I also agree. Guns do not belong on campus. Why? Because they're dangerous. Unfortunately, due to the change in 2017 of state law, we are left with acts that we want to look at security and safety on campus. We hope for deterrence via security measures, and the college has put some good ones in place. Greg mentioned the 26 certified law enforcement officers on campus, the 500-plus security cameras, Alice training, security training. These are hopefully deterrence via security measures.
Nancy Ingram.
Well, as Greg mentioned, that decision was taken out of our hands. I also would have supported to ban guns on campus, and we unanimously supported local control of the decision to have them on campus. Our attention turned to providing the support of additional police on campus. We also took a look at just creating greater visibility of our police on campus and keeping safety as a number-one priority. We've also adopted the see-something, say-something philosophy, and that is, we're reminded of that at every board meeting and in every meeting that you will attend here on campus. So, I agree with all the statements that have been made.
Laura Smith Everett. Not going to find opposition from me. I'm a member of Moms Demand Action, which is, this is central to their mission. And, you know, as an educator, college is already stressful enough, and I don't think we need to add in lethal weapons to that. I would also agree with trustee Musel in that I think this is really about protecting the public entities from the infiltration of lethal weapons. As a family now, we evaluate when we're going to things. There were some festivals this weekend that we just chose not to go to, because I couldn't ensure that we could get all three of our children out of there alive if there was any kind of a shooting. And unfortunately, that is where we are as a society, and I think it's a really critical thing that this institution stands up and says, this place will remain free of lethal weapons.
Okay. We are now ending our last segment, which will be the final remarks. Each candidate was asked to prepare one minute's worth of final remarks, and we'll start with Jamia Haynes.
So, when I first started considering running for this position, I asked myself what a lot of people ask me now, and that is, what exactly does the Board of Trustees do? So, as an attorney, I got out the statute, and I read it. And it listed the things that we've talked about tonight. Overseeing the budget and the mill levy, hiring the president, approving contracts, et cetera. But I also, and I can do all of those things, and I feel qualified to do it. Beyond that, I think there's a bigger job description there that is listed within that text, and that is, I think it's a trustee's job to advocate for and be responsive to the students, the faculty, the staff, and the community. And with regard to doing that, I would encourage the communication necessary to achieve the college's mission in that regard. Thank you.
Nancy Ingram.
Well, I would like to, again, say thank you for having us here this evening. I kind of took a different approach to this, and I'm calling it five things you should know about Nancy Ingram. And the first one, I think, is really important, because it is, my goals for serving as a trustee from four years ago have not changed. The first one is fiscal efficiency. The second one was collaboration, and the third one was institutional excellence. My participation on the board of the Johnson County Mental Health Center is a direct reflection of my services as trustee, and collaborating in this way has resulted in direct conversations as to how we can assist our students as they transition, and I mentioned that a few minutes ago, but I do want to repeat that as well. I have supported the Development of Student Pathways program to assist our students as they begin their path in higher ed, and I'm committed to looking at barriers that are keeping our students from being successful. And I think that's...
You can finish your sentence.
That was only one minute, wasn't it? Thank you.
Colleen Cunningham.
Well, I'd like to thank all of you for attending. As a fan of voting and voters, it's really heartening to see this many people who want to get informed ahead of the election on November 5th. I wanted to kind of bring up, again, the mission statement for Johnson County Community College, which is, inspires learning to transform lives and strengthen communities. Like, if that's not a statement, I don't know what is. And as a person who came from a low-income family, that describes me. My life was transformed, and my communities have been strengthened as a result of that, because I had access to strong public schools. I would like to bring my background as a special educator, as a person with a master's degree, as a person who studied educational policy and leadership studies, and takes a research perspective in solving problems and looking at questions, and how can we find solutions that work for students and for faculty and for community members. So, that is it. I feel like I'm qualified to do that, and I would really like to serve on this board as part of my community service outlook on life.
Laura Smith Everett. I've spent the last three years caring for our youngest child, who had incredible medical obstacles to overcome. And we've spent, my husband and I have spent these last couple of years preparing him to take on the world. And now that he is, I'm ready to get the world ready for him. And I really see this opportunity as trustee, as an extension of my life's work as an educator. And I think about your children and the next generation, and I think it's a really incredible thing that the counter to the divisiveness we see in DC is to invest in our community. And that is why I've chosen to run for trustee, and that's why I think it's a really critical thing that we all take a look at ourselves and see what we can do to support our community.
Lori Bell.
First off, I want to thank the JCCC Faculty Association and the League of Women Voters for hosting tonight. I would like to just say that I want to see the community college remain fiscally financial, welcoming to all, and continue serving students through valuable programs. I believe in the mission of this college and hope to serve students, faculty, and the community as a trustee. Thank you all for coming out tonight and to listen to each of us talk about ourselves. I'm sure that you can see the passion and drive behind a lot of why we're here and why we want to serve on this board. And I hope that you will get out and vote on November 5th. So, whoever you vote for, just vote. Thank you.
Greg Musel.
I'm a small-town farm boy that had two parents who gave a damn about public education and pushed all three of their kids through high school, and I went on to college and went on to law school. And that's why I'm sitting here today, is because they inculcated in me the fact that education was a great thing and a great way forward. Growing up on a farm, you learn to be independent, but you also learn that you're part of a team. That applies to the rest of life. I get inspired every day, you're on campus and see students here. Tomorrow, at lunch, the foundation's going to hold the scholarship lunch, where every student that received a scholarship comes in and gets a box lunch. We take a microphone around and ask them what $500 scholarships means to them. And there will be tears, and there will be lots of crying, and there will be kids that say, "Thank you" to whomever gave that $500, so that I can go to college. That's what this college brings if we remain affordable, accessible, and our budget is
Well, thank you to all of our candidates. This was a wonderful, informative event, and I hope all of you will be voting in November. I would now, we're almost done. I would now like to invite Dr. Jim Leicher back up for some closing remarks and instructions for the reception.
So, how about a round of applause for our moderator? Thank you, Carrie. As well as for the League of Women Voters, who came around, did a lot of work tonight. And lastly, I think the candidates deserve another round of positive congratulations. I realize there are many of you who are waiting for an opportunity to speak to the candidates one-on-one. We ask that you not do that right away here at the front of the auditorium. We'll be escorting them downstairs to the reception, where the opportunities for socializing are a little better. You've heard a lot of words tonight. I'm going to conclude with the one that matters the most. It's a four-letter word, but it's more important than any that you've heard. Vote. Vote early. Vote often. Wait, I wasn't supposed to say that one out loud. But, vote by early November. Thank you, and have a good night.